I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2016. It's Groundhog Day. And at 6:30 PM, we're at City Hall for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley. Councilmember DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Nobial.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda...
For the record, Your Honor, Punxsutawney Phil did not see his shadow.
He did not, no. Early spring. Early spring. Actually, before we move on to our first agenda item, with Councilmember McGuire with us tonight, I'd like to extend the condolences and sympathies of the entire City Council to Bill on the loss of his wife.
Thank you.
Agenda item number one, minutes of the City Council's January 19th business meeting and January 26th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Move of approval.
Move in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries out objections. Agenda item number two, presentation on the first health and safety employee calendar. Mr. Landon, who's going to present?
Carol. Mayor, City Council, this is actually our first annual. Both our wellness team and our safety team got together and said, "We need to involve our families in the wealth, the safety and wellness of our whole staff." It's been one of our emphasis. And they came up with this way, involve their kids, staff members, and also make everybody aware of the importance of this effort. So Carol, take it from here.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm Carol Minnie, the Urban Forester for the City of Palm Coast, and also I'm a member of the wellness team. And I'm just really thrilled that the wellness team and safety team were able to partner together to bring you this calendar. And I want to thank the families for participating, and the children, and they're just extremely talented, and we were just so thrilled with the amount of entries that we got and the clever and the creativity that the children displayed. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and start passing out the awards. I'm not sure, Mayor, do you want to come down here? You want me to hand them out from here? You want to call them and I'll just stand...
Hand them out here, then we'll put everybody together for a picture.
Sounds great.
Okay.
So don't run off, okay? We want to get a picture, and then you can run off, okay?
Okay, I've got the list.
Okay.
The overall winner with the cover illustration, Domingo Gonzalez, age 12, son of Jackie Gonzalez.
Come on up! So I don't know if all of you can see this, but he's talking about "do not drive" and text. So just, you know, I'm sure a lot of people do it, but please try not to, because it's extremely dangerous. So we thank you, Domingo, so much. You got a wonderful gift card, because I'm hoping that you'll enter this year. So that's for art supplies. And a nice little Palm Coast goody bag. And just so those of you can kind of take a look at the calendar, I'll pass one on either side, so you can take a look at it. But it's wonderful, and we're really thrilled with it. So go ahead and pass them down. You can take a look at that. Go ahead and sit down, and we'll call you back up when we need your photos. You guys are in office.
Our second group is age groups three to six. And our winners, Gunnar Martin, age five, son of Robert Martin, and Zoe Almberg, age six, daughter of Kathy Almberg.
I'm assuming that you would like blue sunglasses, and you might like pink?
Yeah, alright.
This one is pink. And here, you got a gift card, too. Michael, so you can do some more art supplies. Oh, and you're gonna want blue. I have a feeling, blue. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Our next, age group 11 through 14. First place, Domingo Gonzalez, age 12, son of Jackie. Second place, Nicole Nabaco, age 14, daughter of Lucy Nabaco. And third place, Alyssa Minnie, age 14, daughter of Charlie Minnie.
And you've got your bags, so you... You've got your... Yeah, you're double dipping. There you go, thank you, Nicole. Appreciate that. Alright, next. Oh, and Alyssa is not present, but we will make sure that she gets her goody bag.
Okay, now we're gonna grow. I don't know why they're out of order, but age group seven to 10. First place, Giselle Mendoza, age nine, granddaughter of Irma Valles. Second place, Jeloni Mendoza, age eight, granddaughter of Irma Valles. Third place, Lantri Martin, age seven, son of Robert Martin. Fourth place, Zeta Rios, age nine, niece of Irma Valles. And fifth place, Ethan Von Balen, age nine, son of Kristen Von Balen.
There you go. Alright. He knew for sure. There we go. Thank you.
Our next group, age group 15 through 18, Faith Torres, age 18, niece of Irma Valles, and Felicia Minnie, age 15, daughter of Charlie Minnie.
Oh, okay. Well, yep, you want to come on up? And I know Felicia Minnie, too, is not present, so we'll make sure that she gets her gift bag.
And lastly, honorable mention, Sky Spears, age seven, daughter of Kay Spears, Chloe Williams, age eight, daughter of Lena Williams, Alyssa Torres, age 13, niece of Irma Valles, Logan Martin, age 10, son of Robert Martin, and Sienna Von Balen, age seven, daughter of Kristen Von Balen.
I'm not sure I've got pink in here. Yep. That's it.
Let's call them all up.
Yes, let's get everyone up. Take a photo off. Come on up.
Yeah, right in front of the... Go ahead, guys. Come on in, squeeze in, guys, squeeze in. Come on. Carol, you in there? There we go. Alright, everyone, keep smiling. Lots of pictures being taken. I like the sunglasses. Karen's got it? We're good? Thank you.
Again, thank you to all of our award winners and honorable mentions. Did a great job. Yes. Agenda item number three, proclamation recognized on February 7th, 2016 as Four Chaplains Sunday and the week of February 8th through February 13th to be observed as Religious Emphasis Week. Mr. Landon.
Mr. McGuire has the proclamation.
Whereas February 7th, 2016 will mark the 73rd anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship USA T Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four U.S. Army chaplains of three faiths who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of Chaplain Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Goody, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Polling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world. And whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. And whereas American Legion Post 115, serving Palm Coast and greater Flagler County, will be holding a Four Chaplains Memorial Service on the anniversary of February 7, 2016. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the entire City Council of the City of Palm Coast, that Sunday, February 7, 2016, be Four Chaplains Sunday and the week of February 8, 2016 through February 13, 2016, be observed as Religious Emphasis Week and call upon all our citizens to commemorate the day and week with the appropriate observances in public places and by prayers in their homes and houses of worship. Signed, the second day of February, 2016. City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Gentlemen, step forward. You see Your Honor, and say a few words if you wish. Thank you, Council, for the proclamation. I'd like to introduce George Stockley, Executive Committee Member of Post 115. I'm Sandy Oshbrokes, Chaplain of American Legion Post 115. And we would certainly invite you out, as we would all of the citizens of Palm Coast, to our meeting Sunday at 2 o'clock. This will be held at the VFW Post at 47 Old Kings Road North. We will be pleased to honor the four chaplains in prayer and in music, and we also want to thank Fire Chief Mike Beadle. He'll be playing the bagpipes for us at our meeting, so we look forward to that. Thank you very much again for the proclamation. Mr. Stockton, any words?
Thank you for the respect for the service, Ben, who gave their lives so we could be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next item is Agenda Item 3A, a presentation by Jenny Scriptco, Fighting Poverty.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us here. As some of you know, I'm John Scriptco. I'm a business owner here in town. I'm also the past president of the Rotary Club of Flagler County. This is my wife, Jenny. I am in a supporting role tonight, as all husbands are. She came up with an idea of bringing a movie here, a documentary, to Palm Coast called Poverty, Inc. She's an entrepreneur with Trades of Hope. We have a small trailer we'd like to show you, and then go a little bit more about why we're here tonight, so please.
Machiavelli said, "The reason there will be no change is because the people who stand to lose from change have all the power, and the people who stand to gain from change have none of the power." That's describing the global aid system today.
I'm glad people want to help. It comes from a good heart. People give us food, they dig us wells, they bring us shoes, they encourage others to give. The problem is, it does not work.
The foreign aid amounted to a huge subsidy, hundreds of millions of dollars.
Tom Shoes found the right model that capture this love of people who want to be generous and helpful.
Our donations have an unpredictable impact on the local economy. Why would you go buy something? It's for free.
Emergency disaster relief has become the permanent model.
After 40 years, if you're still here, there's a problem.
What happened to our cotton farms? That's all gone because of the negative impact of the imports at a second-hand level.
We rich countries that produce a lot of food should sell it to poor countries. It has not worked.
It actually created more poverty.
We don't need one more celebrity doing one more campaign. What we need is to no longer be excluded.
No one wants to be a burger for life.
I know about countries that developed on trade and innovation and business. I don't know of any country that got so much aid, they suddenly became a first-world country.
If you really want to help the poverty industry as we know it, it has to go.
The sooner we tell a beautiful story about the African entrepreneur doing amazing work, then we will begin to shift mindsets.
They're not desolate. They have hope. They have a way to get out of it. There's a way to fix it.
When you do something, you can see the impact on the population, and you can say, "This is because of me."
Having a heart for the poor isn't hard. Having a mind for the poor, that's the challenge.
So what happened is Jenny brought this idea to me as she started working with her company, and just through my connections and knowing Congressman DiLorenzo and a few others in town, so how can we spread the word? We need to have 87 tickets sold by February 16th in order to have the movie come here as a documentary and be shown in Flagler County. Last night, she was working with the producers, and if they get it in their budget and we have the tickets sold, they're actually gonna have one of the producers fly down to Epic Theaters on February 26th at the showing and do a 30-minute question and answer afterwards. And it's not just Epic Theaters in Palm Coast. This has been shown at the Business, excuse me, the School of Harvard Business School, Harvard Business School of Education, and it's received numerous awards around the world for what it's done. And the idea is, it's taken a different perception that we have from Western society that we need to give a hand out and really give a hand up. And we look at the different things that her company does through Trades of Hope and what we do with Rotary, with microloans around the world, $25 so somebody can get chickens so they can pay it back, and they create something instead of keeping them in poverty. So I'll kind of let Jenny speak, because this is really her idea.
Yeah, I came across this film because of the company that I joined, Trades of Hope. It's challenged me to think differently on how to help those individuals who are needed in poverty. Our mission is to empower women by teaching them business skills and marketing and selling their fair trade goods. And that includes worldwide as well as the U.S. When I stumbled across Poverty, Inc., I became very excited because it was speaking exactly to my heart and some of the training I've been focused on in the last two months. I had the opportunity to view the film in its entirety, and it won't disappoint. It will not only challenge you on how you look at poverty, but also how you perceive those individuals who are in poverty. And they truly challenged me as well, and I'm very excited. I have hopes that the producer will be able to come out. Like I said, they're evaluating their budget at this time, but they're looking into it. And it'll provide a great opportunity for discussions after the film on how it affects individuals and also how we can look at it, I think, not only global, but as a community as well.
And as far as my community from Rotary's standpoint, obviously, everybody knows here that we did the water wells with the county and city back in West Fennell. Not many people in the county know you had people drinking out of streams and ditches. It was just here in our community. Back in 2008, 2009, where the recession happened, you had 323 kids registered homeless in Flagler County, and there were seven or eight of them were living in tents out at Prince of Space Preserve. It's right here, local. Pastor Salano's mission and what he does here wouldn't be so big if it wasn't prevalent here in Flagler County as well. So sometimes, Western society, we look past it because we can always give out to something. Just changing the way of thinking. So we're coming here to ask the City Council and the members, come out, come out to the movie, get a ticket. If you want to help us out, there's a website. We have some flyers we can pass out, but the website is HTTPS/TOUGGS.com/events, 83464. So we really appreciate your time tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
Quick question. You need to sell a certain number of tickets in advance, and we do that by going to the website?
Yes, sir.
So what they do, Mayor, is they're gonna reserve those tickets, and if we don't get 87 of those sold, the movie won't go. They'll actually give you, they don't even charge your card or anything for it, but we need to get those 87 to see that movie here.
Given my very limited memory, I hope you've got a piece of paper with that website written down.
Absolutely. I'm a guy, so I've remembered that, too.
You'll leave those for us?
Yes, sir.
And for our residents here?
Absolutely.
Let's see what we can do.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Do you have a Facebook page that maybe would be a little bit easier, too?
Absolutely. So there's a Facebook page set up for it. The URL for it, I can actually give it to you, Mr. DiLorenzo, and if we can share it at that point.
Okay, fine.
How many tickets do you have sold at this time?
As of 6 o'clock coming here, we need 37 more tickets sold. And I think Ms. Holland said there's one more ticket, so we need 36 more tickets sold.
You have two here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Two, two, two. I told him this afternoon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, ordinance rezoning to plus or minus acres from light and warehousing industrial to high-intensity commercial for One Hargrove Grade rezoning. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this item as well as the next item are quasi-judicial matters, these two ordinances. This ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for property located at One Hargrove Grade and described as a portion of Lot 17 of the plat, Palm Coast Industrial Park Map Book 26, pages 62 and 63 of the public records of Flagler County, Florida, containing 2.0986 acres, more or less, from light and warehouse, warehousing industrial or IND-1 zoning district to high-intensity commercial or COM-3 zoning district, providing for conflict severability, providing for non-codification, and providing for an effective date. And again, Mr. Mayor, this is quasi-judicial.
It's quasi-judicial, so are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed? None.
Yes. I spoke to one representative, but I'll make my decision I want to hear tonight.
Very much. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is truly a housekeeping item. This and the next item are really the same commercial or office park, but they're two separate properties, so it's two separate applications. But we are only going to do one presentation because it's actually combined together as a project.
And these are contiguous properties, right?
Contiguous properties, and this really just is changing our zoning to reflect what is out there in the field. So Bill is going to lead us through the details.
For the record, Bill Hoover of the Community Development Department. We have two separate parcels located at the southwest quadrant of U.S. Highway 1 at Hargrove Grade. The easterly parcel is at One Hargrove Grade, and it's about 2.1 acres, while the parcel on the west is about 0.8 acres. And they're proposed to be rezoned from IND-1 or light industrial to COM-3 or high-intensity Both parcels are classified as industrial on the future land use element, and that's the area shown in purple. And the industrial land use classification on the future land use map only allows three zoning districts in that on properties designated industrial, and that's COM-3, IND-1, and And both parcels, as well as most of this industrial park, have been designated IND-1 since the city adopted their official zoning map. It was on July 5th, 2005. And previously, the properties were zoned I industrial that was set up by Flagler County, and these properties were platted back in 1991, and then were annexed into the city in 1999. And again, both parcels propose to be rezoned from light and warehousing industrial to high-intensity commercial. And the high-intensity commercial allows office uses and a wider variety of commercial uses. Bill, can you define a wider variety of commercial uses? Yes, the industrial, the IND-1 that the city has, has very limited commercial uses, and whereas the COM-3, high-intensity commercial, has a lot wider array of commercial uses. So we're probably most familiar with COM-2, which is a general commercial, and that allows like neighborhood type and our shopping centers. And the COM-3 gets into the more intense uses. For instance, the Ford dealership would be an example of a COM-3 use. So if, like, some of our other uses that are COM-3, like some of your more intense commercial uses that are going up to but not quite light industrial uses. And if I can add, Mr. McGuire, just these buildings, as you'll see in the next slide, they were really constructed for office. And the industrial one category will not allow hardly any office, and that's the way the buildings were constructed. So the COM-3 allows an array of office the way it was constructed. Ray, is there a prospective developer that's interested in this property and needs to have it rezoned? No. No, this is already existing. It's been existing, and... Right. Now, as far as the impact, in other words, these buildings were built for industrial one. If we move them up, is there adequate parking and... Yes, we're actually not moving them up. When it was in the county, the industrial one zoning district allowed a hodgepodge of uses. They weren't just bona fide industrial uses. They allowed office. So these were actually constructed for office buildings, and when we did the code in 2005, our industrial one zoning district are really for bona fide industrial uses. So it is inconsistent. But this property is fully developed? Fully developed. Yes, sir.
If there's nobody that's right now looking to change what's in there, who brought it up for us to change it?
It was me, actually, as a suggestion to the property owners, because throughout the years, they have been coming in trying to get office uses that we would say the industrial zoning district doesn't allow. And it was actually our suggestion and working with the owner of the property to come and rezon the property to where they can allow to have the office used the way the buildings were constructed.[1720.33]
Now, as far as the impact, in other words, these buildings were built for industrial one. If we move them up, is there adequate parking and?
Yes, we're actually not moving them up. When it was in the county, the industrial one zoning district allowed a hodgepodge of uses. They weren't just bona fide industrial uses. They allowed office. So these were actually constructed for office buildings, and when we did the code in 2005, our industrial one zoning district are really for bona fide industrial uses. So it is inconsistent.
But this property is fully developed?
Fully developed.
Yes, sir.
If there's nobody that's right now looking to change what's in there, who brought it up for us to change it?
It was it was me, actually, as a suggestion to the property owners, because throughout the years, they had been coming in trying to get office uses that we would say the industrial zoning district doesn't allow. And it was actually our suggestion and working with the owner of the property to come and rezone the property to where they can allow to have the office used the way the buildings were constructed.
All the way from 2005, they existed like this?
They did, because they had a nonconforming use, which they were allowed to have the use, but once that use, someone vacated that use over a year, then that's when they had to comply with our industrials.
So they've got empty space now, which would be easier to fill if we went to COME three.
Right.
The building on the left at three Hargrove Grade, this was constructed in 1984, and the building on the right, which you can definitely see is an office building, that was constructed in 1995. A similar building on one Hargrove Grade was constructed in 2005, and construction commenced, I think it was like January 4th, 2005. So it all three of the buildings were reviewed under the I industrial zoning district that was created by Flagler County, and that's one of these type of zonings where the commercial, you have office, then you got commercial, then you got heavy commercial, then you got industrial. And they, the way they set their zoning up, it picked up all those uses. Palm Coast Industrial One is more selective, and it just deals with light industrial type uses.
Additional council questions?
Yeah, we just one, Your Honor. If the council does not approve the rezoning, what are the results? What impact is it going to have?
Well, the buildings will just stay with the current zoning, IND one, and the, for instance, in my research, I saw where they had an attorney want to come out there in one of the units, and they had to turn down this attorney from occupying because that particular office suite had been, was not office use in 2005, so it was some kind of commercial business use. So that particular suite could not be leased to an attorney, so they lost a tenant because of that. So and that's been an ongoing problem.
They would have a, the?
What, the problem, the attorneys or the building?
The building. And if, let's say, you're one of the people in the building, and let's just say, I used to have a planning consulting company, so I would go into an office building as, you know, maybe rent two smaller suites in there. But if the person next to you is creating a lot of noise because they have an industrial type use, I can't operate a consulting company next to one that has that kind of use. So it, we have internal conflicts right in the building, plus a lot of confusion between the tenants, like, well, how's come there's an office use right there, and I can't, you know, I want to be in your building, but I'll have to wait for however many more months till an office suite actually opens up.
What about retail in COME three?
They would be able to have some retail. And we think it's an appropriate buffer to the industrial zone, having the frontage on US one.
What's your council questions? Seeing none, let's open the meeting to the public, and from the public, we should be heard on agenda item four and/or five, although we'll have separate comment on five. If so, please come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jimmy Millholland, Millholland. I'm the property manager of one Hargrove Grade, and I do live in Palm Coast and a business owner in Palm Coast as well. I've been managing the property around three years, and during that time, I've had numerous people come in, look for space, unable to occupy it due to the restrictions with the industrial one zoning classification. I spoke with Mr. Tanner a few times about it, and I was trying to get a letter of grandfather to allow this to happen. He explained a little bit more detail of how the nonconforming use works. Since that time, I've had maybe three more people come through, unable to occupy the space. So it does a couple of things. One, it does not benefit the owner whatsoever, it's vacancies. Two, it doesn't help me either as a property manager. However, the building itself, if you'd see it, I don't know if you've got interior pictures or not?
No.
It's office. It's like this. It's a shrine to the individual who built the building. He's done a very good job maintaining it, and to go in to reduce it back to industrial use, you'd have to tear the whole building down. You couldn't do it. You just could not do it. I look forward to having a positive outcome here and try to get the people out there to see it. It is a nice building, and it's strictly office. I think it would be beneficial to approve it and go forward. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yeah, thanks for hearing this. My name's Mike Machen, and I own three Hargrove Grade, and the building was originally built by ITT. It was offices, I think, for their engineering department. So the building does not have high ceilings or big huge roll-up doors or the kinds of things that would fit industrial. As Mr. Tanner mentioned, I've been able, I've been able to keep some tenants simply because I had an existing tenant when the change was, and they were office or something like that, or in one case, a church. And so I was able to replace it again very quickly with a church. But the church has grown, the church can't expand because the other units where I could allow them to expand are clearly, or at least according to the zoning, is industrial, and I couldn't use them. So I've turned down many tenants who have not been able to get into some of my vacancies because they simply, you know, a karate studio, though they can't go in there, a dentist can't go in there. So many different items cannot go in some of my vacant units, so I sat there with vacant units. I can't put industrial in them because the ceiling's too low, and it's built out like an office, and it doesn't have a roll-up door. So I'm in between a rock and a hard place, not to mention the valuation on the building. Like, if I get an appraisal to try to refinance or something, the appraisal, he's just, you know, scratching his head because he has to downplay the value simply because in time, I could be in a situation where I couldn't lease any of it if a person, you know, if I had tenants that left. So that's the, that's the issue. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing none, approach the podium and close the public portion meeting. Go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or emotions? Mr. DiLorenzo.
I just have a quick comment. I could tell you, I had an office in one Hargrove for several years, and it's an office building. It has drop ceilings, it has an upstairs. You could not make that an industrial use of any kind without, I guess, tearing, at least tearing a big portion of it up. It's a true office building.
And I agree that this is an excellent transitional building. I'm not sure that I wouldn't want industrial sitting right there on?
Right on the corner.
US one, so I think that's a good usage. Mr. McGuire?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel?
Yes.
Mayor Nettis?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, it's going to sound very familiar. It's an ordinance, a rezoning from light and warehousing industrial to high intensity commercial for three Hargrove Grade. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The companion ordinance also quasi judicial. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map for property located at three Hargrove Grade and described as a portion of lot seventeen on the palm, or the plat Palm Coast Industrial Plat, mapbook twenty-six pages sixty-two and sixty-three of the public records of Flagler County, Florida, containing .082 acres, more or less, from light and warehousing industrial IND one zoning district to high intensity commercial zoning or COME three, providing for conflict severability, providing for non codification, and for an effective date.
Thank you very much. This is quasi judicial? Any ex parte communications?
No.
None on this one?
None on this one.
Okay, no, no ex parte communications? There's no additional presentation?
No additional comments from staff.
Any questions from council? And from the public, which we heard in agenda item number five, it's the same issue as agenda item number four. Seeing none, approach the podium and close the public portion meeting. Go back to council. Additional questions, comments, motion? To approve.
Second.
Moved in second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel?
Yes.
Mayor Nettis?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, ordinance relating to and providing in accordance with the city of Palm Coast charter for an equitable adjustment to the salaries of the mayor and members of the city council. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, in accordance with the city of Palm Coast charter for an adjustment to the salaries of the mayor and members of the city council, providing for legislative findings for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Background on this one is our charter calls for city council by ordinance being able to establish a salary for council and the mayor. When you do this, there's a couple of requirements. First of all, you have to adopt the ordinance six months prior to the next general election, which is this November. The actual increases, if approved by city council via an ordinance, do not go into effect until after the election and the new city council is seated. And so that's the process that is taking place right now. What we have done with this one, because you've had a couple of workshops on it and discussed it and asked us to put together some options in two categories. One of them would be what the salaries would be established come November of sixteen, and which would be a separate option, and you don't have to do it, but is part of the ordinance, if you'd like, is to have an annual automatic increase based on an index, an index increase, if you will. In your packet, you will see that there are five options for possible salary established of November and three in the indexing category. Current salary for city council is $9,600 annually, and the mayor is $11,400. Your other four options, I'll let you all kind of talk about those, but, you know, anywhere from a CIP increase up to the lowest salary we have for city employees or the average salary here in Flagler County based on state information we've established. The indexing, there are three options that were discussed. One of them would be the same annual pay plan adjustment for city employees that happen in January of each year. Another one would be the June 30th Consumer Price Index for this area. And lastly, would be the state formula that establishes an annual increase for county commissioners in the state of Florida, and you use those percentages each year if you would like. So with that?
Why July for the CPI? Why not January?
June 30th CPI is what we use for our pay plan, so it's the same number that we use when we use that number. It's commonly used by us on others. You could establish another date if you'd like. That's just what we commonly throw out there. This is wide open. I mean, we're not suggesting any of these, we're just throwing them out for your discussion as you requested.
And actually, I believe for section two, there is a fourth option, and that's no automatic incremental increase.
Absolutely, yes, just.
Now, this is, this is a little messy, because city council has a draft ordinance with two blanks. One blank is for what we propose to do for salary adjustments, if anything, and then a second blank is for what kind of automatic incremental changes or nothing. So what we're going to, what I'm going to propose to do is we're going to take section one of the ordinance, which is the salary adjustments, the base salary adjustments. If we get a motion and a second, and if that passes, then we will move on to section two, look for a motion and a second. If there is a motion and a second, and the first section does not pass, then it fails for lack. We move on to one of the other options until we find an option that gets at least three votes. It's going to be a little time consuming, going to be a little confusing. The public will be invited to speak on each option. So council members, is there a motion for section one, that is the adjustment of the base salary?
Is there a motion to adjust the base salary?
One, you have, you have, you have five options. Leave it alone. Let me run through them. Leave it alone, leave it as it is, the mayor making 11,400, city council making 9,600. Second option is to take the current salary plus annual employee pay raise adjustments. And over the years, we have adjusted salaries of our staff by some percentage. You could modify the base salaries by that, which would raise the mayor's salary to 11,642 and the council to 9,792. Or, third option, since the last salary adjustment was made in 2007, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, here we are nine years later in 16, you could use that same CPI calculation and do a catch-up, just as if you had given the CPI for each of those nine years. That would result in a mayoral salary of $13,064 and a council salary of $11,200. Or, option four, you could say that the city council's salary should be based on the salary of the lowest paid city employee. That would make the mayor's salary $28,063 and the council's salary 23,782. The fifth option is to base the salary on the average wage in Flagler County, based on the Bieber, the Bureau of Economic Research, Business and Research Division, 2014 average wage. That would put the mayoral salary at 39,397 and city council at 33,387. So you have options of everywhere from no change to 39,000 for the mayor, 33,000 for city council.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Mr. McGuire.
Chris, how is the annual employee pay plan adjustment derived? Option two.
Each year, we, as Mr. Landon mentioned, we take a look at the June 30th CPI, Consumer Price Index, which usually comes out, we start getting indications of it late in July. The reason why that was selected for a number of indexes that are used by the city is because that's like the latest we can go and still have hard numbers for the budgeting process in order to bring the budget to city council in September to include whether there are revenue adjustments or expense adjustments that are based on the CPI.
But the CPI is the numbers that you use, that percentage?
That's what we look, we look at that percentage, and sometimes it's modified lower. We did a year where we did half of the CPI one year, we've done years where we've done zero. It really depends on how the budget is doing at that particular year.
And that's for what it's worth, that's the standard methodology used in union contracts to adjust wages each year when you negotiate a labor contract. So what I'm seeing here is that there isn't any difference between option two and option three, except option three offers retro pay.
That's correct.
I don't like that. Thank you.
Okay.
Looking for a motion, Your Honor?
I'm looking for a motion on one of the five options.
Your Honor, I move that the council accept option two.
Second.
Moved in second. Option two is the current salary plus annual employee pay adjustments based on the CPI. Is that correct? That would make the mayoral salary 11,628, council salary 9,792. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to have input from the citizens?
Sorry about that, yes. We have a motion, so we're going to ask for public comment on version two of the first set of options on city council salaries.
My name is Alan Peterson, and I'm the individual who was responsible, I was on the city council in '07, and I'm the individual who essentially recommended the salaries that you currently have. I'd like to tell you, there was done on a lot of scientific analysis and extensive research, but essentially, it was done comparing a few local cities and a desire to keep council's salaries below $10,000. I believe, and you well know, that your function is to establish policies and regulations for the city. You are not employees, in my estimation. You essentially are the board of directors of the city, and Jim Landon, in a business sense, would be the president and perhaps CEO. So I think that you're So I think that your salaries should not be tied in any way to employee salaries or employee raises. My suggestion to you, and it may not be appropriate because it isn't one of your options, would be to increase your salaries by 25% to $12,000 for council members and $15,000 for the mayor. I would, I am not a favor, a fan of indexing, because it indirectly gives you a raise every year without any public input. It's just automatic and isn't particularly transparent to the public. So I would not, I would suggest to you a fixed salary, no indexing. To offset part of this additional expense, I would suggest that you consider adjusting your automobile allowance to conform to IRS regulations. That might lower your allowance. But I don't consider you to be employees, either full or part-time, and I don't think that you should establish what you think is fair and reasonable compensation for your time and effort, based on any employee raises or current salary levels. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack Town of Palm Coast. I'd like to make a little suggestion on your raises. Why don't you just go the way Social Security does it? Right? Because you're talking about, you haven't had a raise since eight years ago, and you've established, I haven't had a raise in three years, and I'm making less than you people are making. So base yourself on what I make. I'm just above $10,000 a year. Now, you're all working, and you're getting allowances for something. I'm not getting nothing. So whatever I spend is coming out of my own pocket. Nobody says, here, you spent $15 for gas, we reimburse you. So put that as number six, right? Adjustments according to Social Security raises.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, good evening. Vincent Legori, Mayor. It's very difficult to stay within the confines of salaries, so I prepared something. I think I'll cover the entire spectrum for you, and I'll be under three minutes. Okay. I do believe that councils should get raises, but there should be a formalized basis on how you do it and what you compare to. Okay. With that said, the bans upon the City Council preclude public officials from engaging in other activities and endeavors. Question, what other activities did the attorney put in here? What are we talking about? Are we talking about recreational, family, or other employment? If these comprise the other, obviously, why jeopardize your primary job and family by considering to run for council? It makes no sense. Either there is a vehicle to supplement, this, I see this as a vehicle to supplement income and should not be. Salary comparisons, which cities and commissions? This is what I believe in. I have analyzed council salaries for Deltona, Port Ar, Drummond Beach, Deland, and Palm Coast. Council salaries are perfectly in line with the sister cities, meaning that you're right there for the council and slightly above or below for the mayor. The council has concluded that the current salary structure is disproportionate to the time and effort required for public service. Does not this statement apply to all who serve in all Florida 96 cities? What makes this council unique? You know what the job entails? If you can't do it, don't do it. What do you gain from expanding the potential pool of candidates? Recent high school grads with no business experience? A desperation job due to a lack of jobs? Quantity is not what we should be looking for. We should be looking for quality. Historically, pool availability is comprised of retired and/or business professionals who have the expertise and the time and the wherewithal to serve. Lastly, how does implementing this ordinance serve the best interests of the people? My point is that the questions I have presented should be diligently compared, answered, and until they are, this proposed ordinance should be placed on hold. But in retrospect, I would like to say that I believe your salaries should be tied to the sister cities. For example, Deltona, I've communicated with the mayor and the city clerk there, and they love you. And when they heard the salary levels you were proposing, they said, my God, we're moving to Palm Coast. But all around the shop that I went to, all city clerks told me that the salaries are compared to other sister cities within Volusia, within Flagler, and then a determination is made. In the case of Deltona, they do it every two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Neil McCopan, a 25-year resident of Flagler County and recently moved back to Palm Coast. Flagler Beach's taxes and insurance just were overwhelming, so. In behalf of my family, three families of children, my children and their children, we love Palm Coast. And the reason Palm Coast is such a superb community now is the efforts of the City Council. Now, the efforts of the people who created the ordinances and regulations for the city 10, 15 years ago was well thought of, deeply researched, and approved by the residents of the county. So at that time, it seemed as though the county council, or the City Council, when the person's salaries and compensation and the mayor's compensation was appropriate. Well, eight years later, I think it should be considered to increase for two reasons. Cost of living has increased, your efforts have been superb, the city is thriving because of your efforts, and you sacrifice a lot of time and family responsibilities to serve on the City Council, and I think you deserve a, some type of increase. Now, you're not employees. As Mr. Peterson said, you're more like a Board of Directors, and you should have a formal procedure as to, in the future, how to figure out how to do your increases. So my recommendation to this citizen is to increase your salaries in proportion to CPI from nine years ago, and that'd be your new base, and then have a formal procedure for year-to-year based upon the city's performance and your performance as to your future increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I agree with this gentleman who just spoke, but I disagree with him on one point. You can't go back nine years ago. I moved here four months ago because this was one of the best towns in Florida to live in. Do you deserve a raise? Absolutely. Because if this job was for money, three-quarters of the population of this city would be fighting to get your jobs. So there's got to be a reason why you do this, and because you do it because you love the city. So I do think you deserve a raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Don't approach the podium. We'll close the public portion, come back to City Council. We have a motion and a second for option 2, which is to take the current salary plus the annual employee pay adjustment, which would raise the salary following the election for the mayor to $11,628 and for the council to $9,792. That's a $792 raise for council and a-
Well, there can never operate.
And a, something doesn't look right. And it's a $228 increase for the mayor? That's not right. I don't think.
How much do you think it is?
Well, no, but the council is going from $6 to $792. That's $192. Maybe it is right. I don't know.
Well, yeah. It's a percentage.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote on option 2.
Place Mayor Shipley. No. Councilmember DiLorenzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel.
No.
Mayor Nets.
No.
Mayor, this motion fails 3 to 0.
Okay. Option 2 is off the board.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Sure.
Just, first of all, I want to let everybody know that they want to come to, that people from Deltona want to come here, not because of our salaries, because it's a better place to live. So Palm Coast is. But just to make a point, I've heard, personally, I've heard a lot of negative in regards to salary increases. And one of them was corruption, and one of them was people will run for, you know, they'll run because they want a job, and you cannot run an organization by not doing things because someone will possibly abuse it. That is simply saying we're not going to do the positive because someone might take advantage of that. And that just isn't how you grow. Now, the salaries I'm looking at here, aside from the $39,000 level, that to me looks like a stipend that someone can run with, who can sit back and say, you know what? That can supplement my income. I could now take the time and I can run. Because I disagree with the statement that retired people should be running for office. That is not a representation of the community. Now, I want retired people. I want smart people, because, you know, the biggest thing we have is experience. It's, you know, and the only way you get experience, obviously, is through age. And I don't think high school kids coming out of high school are going to run for office. Excuse me? Okay.
Please, do not have a discussion.
And they're not, kids are not going to come out of high school and run for office. Okay? But good people who have their city at heart will now have the ability and not have to say, well, you know what? When I retire, I'm going to run for office so I can, I can put myself to use. That shouldn't be. We should have a representation of people in there that represent our community, which is the 30s, the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, all of those ages. But if you're working for a living, it's difficult to say, well, I'm going to stop working, but try to take care of my family. So the salary should be a stipend. Shouldn't be a salary where you can now say, okay, I'm done. I could work and live off of this. But it should be enough that I could work part-time and do this job effectively and have enough money to support my family. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there another motion?
I just wanted to say that I do, I do understand checking with other cities and seeing what other cities make, and that's what I did, and I tried to bring that out in the last meeting. But I looked at cities that had the same population as us. Now, I don't know if I'd really want to move to any of those cities, but they had the same population as us, and they, all but Deltona, made more money than us. But I didn't even want to look at it as though, who makes more? Whatever they have to deal with in their town might be different than our town. I tried to ask a lot of people that worked for the city, people that voted for me, didn't vote for me, who liked me, didn't like me, what do you think? To get an average, because I took this position because I want to work for everybody here. And the only way I could do that is not to think what I personally would like, but what everybody else feels we should have. And I only met two people that said we shouldn't get raises at all. The rest of the people that I spoke to did not like the idea of $40,000 or $39,000. But it has to be something more than what it is now. And I tried to find something to base it on, and I know we have people here that have been in the city for a long time, and we respect them because we know they've been here a while. So I asked for the minutes for the meeting from 2007 and 2003. And what I found is that there's a very beautiful letter that was written for all the reasons why in 2007 we should have a raise. And they're all the same reasons I'm speaking about now, but for some reason, that same person is not feeling the same as in 2007, for whatever reason. But it still goes down to majority, and the majority are not going to like $40,000. Whether we believe we should have it or not, they're not going to go for it now. However, we have a new election in November. Younger people might come in, different people with different ideas may come in. So for now, I personally would go for number 3, which is what Mr. DiLorenzo had originally said, where we do catch up. And then after we catch up, but then not have it so that it's, goes by the city, what the city does. But just to leave it the way it is now, that we can vote on it again, or whoever comes after us can vote on it again if they got the guts to do it.
Is that a motion?
And I think that's how we want to, yes, that's a motion for number 3.
Motion for option 3. Is there a second?
I'd like to make a comment before I second it.
Please.
First of all, and I'll, this will be fairly short. There are people in our city that don't think that the Palm Coast City Council has ever done anything right and never will. When you look at the compensation, therefore, you look at what goals you're trying to get to. Why, why do you think there should be one? If it's to attract younger people? Is it to allow you to finance your election or reelection campaign? Is it to maintain a certain cost of living? None of these, or a young person would do it. I mean, I, I have a lot of people in my district, and they're working-class people and with families, and if, and if I told a guy that, hey, I want you to run for my seat in the City Council, and your pay would be, say, $28,000 to $38,000, he'd say, I can't, I can't feed my family, pay my house payment, run my car. I can't do it for that kind of money. So, so what we're talking about here is something that just is a stopgap measure. And the other thing to keep in mind is that this time next year, a new City Council could be discussing the same issue again. Nothing that we do is carved in stone. What we say today is how we feel today and what we think is best today. A year from now, another City Council may think, gee, we need to go in a different direction. So, I mean, I guess I'm trying to say here, and maybe somewhat clumsily, is that I've sat here for five years and made decisions, and I've been second-guessed on every one of them. And as I said before, there are people, not going to mention any names, who doesn't, who don't think that the City Council and myself have ever done anything right. So you've just got to look at the facts, search your own intelligence, and then make a decision. I have spoken.
I guess if I could, I'll make a comment now as well.
Please.
Okay.
Are you second? Are you just coming?
No.
I already seconded.
You did second it? Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on agenda item, or option number 3.
Okay. We've had a lot of discussion about this already in several of our workshops. For me, this goes to serving. You serve your community. You do this as a service to your community. But there is a cost to doing this. You're expected, and you wish to, attend events, see the people, work with them. It's a great opportunity to actually learn what they're thinking by going to events. So making sure that what we receive matches the cost of doing this, and it's not a job. It's, and it's, that's why it's, it's not employment, and I wouldn't even call it a salary. It's, you're receiving some compensation to offset the cost of actually doing it. And that's why I'm just, I said from the beginning that I understood some of the reasoning to bump it up some, but it's, I just don't have a heart for bringing it all the way up to anything more than, you know, what it takes to do the job, and what it takes to be here and do it to the best of your ability.
As long as we're commenting, there's been some mention about the compensation that the county commission gets, and that's somewhat over $50,000. It's important to understand that by the Florida Constitution, county commissioners- It's important to understand that by the Florida Constitution, county commissioners are defined as full-time positions. And as full-time positions, their salary and their benefits are based on the fact that they are considered full-time.
And they're established by the state.
And it's established by the state, and they have the fortunate position of never having to vote on their salary. It's automatically adjusted as the population of the county goes up. Ms. Shipley made reference to a letter that was written in 2007. That was a letter, I believe, that I wrote. And in 2007, I supported the increase, as I did in 2003, because the compensation was significantly less than, as Mr. DiLorenzo alludes to, what you are out of pocket if you attend events and if you meet with people and you travel around the city and so on and so forth. My feeling is that we have reached the level where that compensation is adequate, and I am voting no on any increases. But we have a motion on option three, which is the catch-up, based on the CPI from 2007 to 2015. It would raise the mayor's salary to 13,064 and council to 11,002. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to, did you want to let the public speak on this one?
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you for keeping, reminding me. Any from the public wish to be heard on this motion?
Jack, I'm Palm Coast. I've been, I've worked all my life, and I've never, I've never had anybody say that we're going to start negotiating 10 years ago. You go to the best and to the biggest. The farthest they go is two years, and only if they've been in constant talk about it. When you come and say, well, we're going to adjust our salary to go back eight years and then do it on a yearly basis each year, that's a little ridiculous. You, why not go back to 1999? Why not go back to when you were working and say, well, I was making $10,000, $20,000, $20,000 a year, and I was getting a $15,000 raise? You're going back eight years, where half the people, probably half the people in this place don't even, aren't even living here eight years. So you're going to go back, go back your two years, and then we'll, I'll concede that anyway.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, I agree with you on the concept of duty and responsibility, but I don't. But that comes as no surprise with our past, that there should be no increase. There should be an increase. And what I suggest, really suggest to you firmly, a fair and equitable basis is this. If you raise your salaries now to that 13,000 level for the mayor and 11,000, you have surpassed all of the cities that I did the analysis on and spoke to. You are the top flight then in this, your sister cities. So what I would suggest, again, respectfully, is that you do give yourselves a raise, a somewhat, you know, palatable raise to the public, that doesn't depend on annual increases, but down the road, whichever you decide, two years from now, like all our other sister cities do, say, hey, we'll review this again. And I believe that should be in the charter, so that the next council doesn't come in and say, hey, they got 13,000, we want 16, and we go into a bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ron, across the Palm Coast. I'm kind of torn between a couple of these things here. I agree with the mayor that you probably don't deserve a raise. But if you're going to give yourselves a raise, and it looks like you're going to one way or another, I agree with number three. And that is to increase the salary to 13,064 for the mayor, 11,002 for the council members, based on the annual consumer price index increase since April 2007, which I know is retroactive, but with these choices, this is about the best one there is. It's a 14.6% increase. I do, I definitely don't agree with giving the city council 28,000, and absolutely not 39,000. So, you know, you're part-time, you're not full-time, you're not employees of the city. You're doing an excellent job. I can't say enough about that, each and every one of you. And I know Mr. McGuire is not running again for office. He's in my, he represents my district, a hell of a guy, damn-good representative. And I'm going to be really sad to see you go. And now, because you're going and nobody has come forward to put in for your job, I just might. And if I do, I don't want any pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I have a question for probably the borough attorney. Is there any way that we can put this question on the ballot for the residents to vote on it?
Of course we can.
Because, obviously, and I respect you all, but it would be very, if I was sitting in your seat, I'd be very hard-pressed not to take some kind of a raise, because you do your job well. But I think it should be something that the residents of the city have a right to vote on, because we're the ones that are ultimately going to pay the increase in our tax bill. Whether you get $200 a year or $2,000 a year, our taxes are going to go up. So I think that one of two things should happen. You should either put it on the ballot for the residents of the city to vote on, or have a special meeting just for that one topic, and let all of the residents come pro and for, pro and against it. And this way, if it's not going to be on the ballot, at least then you would all know how the city residents feel. So I don't know whether or not the city attorney can determine now if it's something that could be put on the ballot, because this is only February, and we don't even know who the candidates are going to be yet. So I'm quite sure that if we don't know who the candidates are going to be, and like Mr. McGuire said, next year, there's going to be three more people sitting up here that aren't sitting up here now. So I really think that either it should be to a vote by the public or have a separate meeting with no other issues being discussed except a salary ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. See, no one approached the podium. They closed the public portion meeting, come back. Mr. Reishman, the issue of putting this on the ballot.
It's not required.
Not required.
Certainly not required. But it's like I said earlier, this, what, this conversation today stems from my request for a charter review, which was brought to me, one of the items was to set the salary so that it would have to be elected, it would have to be a referendum. And I made it very clear, I was very uncomfortable, you know, bringing up salary changes. And, but it was forced this way. And my, if the current motion doesn't pass, my motion is going to be exactly what this gentleman suggested, is that we pick two or three items from this list and put them on a referendum and let the people decide whether and what level of salary can, and that can be done, correct?
The current charter provides that ultimately, any change in your salary will have to be done by the passage of an ordinance. So if there is a referendum, and that referendum would agree with or select a particular amount of increase or not, whatever that was, that would come back to this council and, or a future council, and that council could choose to follow it or not.
Right. But we know, right.
You would have, for lack of a better term, the will of the people, but ultimately, the charter provides.
Exactly.
The charter provides. It is going to be the discretion of this council by passing or not passing an ordinance.
Correct. But it would, like you said, in a referendum, we will know the will of the people. And then ultimately, my suggestion would be we do what they say, but.
Right.
If I don't get my money, I'll strike.
The city council. We have a motion and a second for option three, which is a catch-up. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
No.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel?
No.
Mayor Nets?
No.
Motion fails, three to two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the council select three of these options or two, three of these options, and could they be put on a referendum for the people to vote on, and the options at minimum be, leave it as is. And then we select two other options and put them on a referendum that the people can select, leave it as is, A, B, whatever, you know.
Without going into the details, we have a motion to defer this to a referendum. Is there a second?
I have a question, Your Honor. Mr. Reishman, what's the statute? When is the latest that you can put a referendum on a ballot?
Well, I guess we have two elections currently scheduled. One will be a primary election. If we have, I defer to the city clerk, but if we have, we've got three seats that are up. So if any of those three seats have more than two candidates running, then we'll have an election for at least one of those seats. And at that point in time, there could be a question asked of the electorate on the issue in the motion. I do not, I cannot tell you at this time whether we would be able to timely bring back, I guess it would be to push, to put through a referendum, we would need a resolution to do that, I believe.
Now, could this not be done on the general election?
Yes, that was, I was coming to that. I was coming to that.
That'd give us a lot more time.
Correct, correct. But then the raise obviously would not apply, I believe, from a timing standpoint, based upon the current charter, to the next group coming in. We'd have to take a look at that.
They would, that next group would be the group that would then pass the ordinance.
Correct, correct.
That would do that. But we would have that vote. Since it's not an actual amendment to the charter, those regulations don't apply. This would really be, so in other words, if we had, if this was a change to the charter, we would have to have it in within six months before the election. But because this isn't a change to the charter, this is simply a referendum on the recommendation.
First of all, I want to make it clear that the, if you were to pass an ordinance this evening on first reading of one of the five options, I would not call that a change to the charter.
Correct.
I would call that a change to your salary as is contemplated by the charter.
Exactly.
Correct. And I don't mean to be argumentative.
No, I know what you're saying.
But I think that's an important distinction.
Yes.
So if you wish to not select any of the options that are before you, and I don't believe that, and I don't want to speak for staff, but I don't believe that these options are your only options this evening. Those were the options that were brought to you by staff to initiate discussion, like, just like we're having. Now, with a referendum, that is going in a different direction, and it would be to seek the desire of those who vote, and then that would simply come back for, as additional input to a future council. And then they would be faced with having to arguably follow the will of those people that voted, or choose another option.
Correct.
So we're not talking about amendment to the charter?
Correct.
We're talking about just a, something that's not binding on city council, but a...
My understanding.
Correct. But it's a referendum put out, that's why I'm saying it doesn't really need to follow the regulations of a charter amendment.
Which is correct.
But we get the will of the people.
A non-binding referendum.
And there would be, just disclosure, there would be some, I don't, and I have no idea what it would be, but there would be some cost associated to that.
Possibly.
Referendum, it being, I mean, it'd be minimal, I would imagine, to have that referendum added to the ballot, but, but just so we know that.
Well, the only potential, and again, maybe the city clerk can help, really depend upon the nature of the ballot in November, because if we throw it over from one page to two page, or two pages to three pages, that's when it could actually start costing a little bit more money.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that is, but I have heard discussion at this council about that that can start adding up into, as they say in the industry, real money.
Well, I think myself and the residents of Palm Coast would be okay with that expense, given that their input as a whole would be reflected. I know I will still be on the council after that election, well, God willing. But, you know, and I will follow what the people say or suggest. Jason.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Mr. Reishman, in my mind, as I think through this, if that was to occur, if it was to be on the November ballot, then an ordinance was taken up by the new council, that wouldn't apply till the next council after that, which would be 2018. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, yes, because the ordinance will have passed.
Let me read what the charter says, so we have it all in front of us. Such compensation as passed by ordinance, council member, shall not take effect until the date of the commencement of the terms of the council members elected at the next regularly scheduled election that follows the adoption of said ordinance by at least six months.
Right. And that would be after the previous, the November general election. See, these are two things, and I'm sorry, I'm, I just want to, I made promises to people, and the thing I was telling them was, I don't want this for me. You know, I'm trying to, that's why I'm saying, I'm not looking to, you know, make money here, but I do want the future of the council to start reflecting people, or just make the opportunity more available. So this would be 2018, for sure. And we would know the will of the people, though, before that. I would also like to see on that ballot is an amendment, a change to the charter, though for sure, that moved the pay raises or the salaries to a referendum versus an ordinance. But we'll deal with that next Tuesday.
We have a motion on deferring this and putting a, putting the question on a non-binding referendum. We had a motion, I believe we had a second? Second, Ms. Shipley?
No.
She's thinking about it.
My thoughts is, our system...
Mr. Nobiel made the motion. Is there a second?
No.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. A question for the city clerk. Could you go back and review for me the voting on option two? What was the breakdown, please?
Option two, in section one of the ordinance, Vice Mayor Shipley, no. Councilmember DiLorenzo, yes. Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember Nobiel, no. Mayor Nets, no.
This is getting extraordinarily complicated, and it's getting messy. I, Mr. Reishman, would you refresh my memory on a motion to reconsider?
Someone that was on the prevailing side of the motion, which in this case were the noes, would have a right to make a motion for reconsideration. That's a separate motion. It would need to be seconded. And if that received three votes, then you could go back and reconsider. It's a two-step process. So those people that voted for option number two were not on the prevailing side, so they would not have the ability of Robert's rules to move to reconsider. Those folks who voted no for option number two would have the right, under Robert's rules of procedure, to make a motion for reconsideration. Mr. Mayor?
And I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice mayor, because it is inappropriate for the chair to offer a motion. So I have passed the gavel and the chair for this discussion to the vice mayor. And I'm going to make a motion to reconsider the vote on agenda, on option number two. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Can I hold on?
She can't second.
I can't second because I'm vice.
No, no, the motion can be offered, has to be offered by somebody in the prevailing...
Right, she can second. She actually can second.
She can, she can make a second. Sorry. So we have a motion and a second to reconsider the vote on option number two. This is not a, let's have a roll call vote anyway, just so we're real clear. Roll call vote on the motion to reconsider.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Give me one second, sorry. Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel?
No.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion...
The motion passed.
Motion passes four to one, so now you have the option...
Now we're back to considering...
That's where I'm lost.
Heidi, you should be chairing this. Well, actually, you don't know, you can bring it back to me now, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I hope we got this on video.
Sure that we're following Robert's rules. Okay.
You're doing great, this is great.
So, the option number two, which is the salary, it's a one-time salary increase based on the, essentially based on the CPI, that would raise the mayor's salary from 11-4 to 11-628, and the council's salary from 9-6 to 9-792. Is there a motion on option number two?
Didn't we just vote on option two?
No, no.
That was to reconsider, and all it does is open it up for further, for reconsideration.
This is, this is the proverbial second bite at the apple, folks, so...
Second bite of the apple. Is there a motion to approve option two?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Let's open the meeting to the public. We're back to considering option two, which is a one-time adjustment to mayor and council salaries based on the CPI. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this reconsidered motion? Seeing none approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote on option two.
Can I have one question?
Sure.
This is, like you said, one year, so next year it doesn't increase.
That is correct, there's no...
Okay.
Well, that will be addressed in the second half of the ordinance. Keep in mind, you've got section two of the ordinance.
As we consider section two, can we, can we consider having, just having it reviewed every two years?
You can do it.
Is that, I mean, I don't know if that's in the top portion of the ordinance or the bottom portion, I guess that's my question.
Mayor, council, this, you can do this anywhere you want.
Okay.
Okay? This was, this was...
The ordinance that was prepared was a draft ordinance.
Correct, it was just to initiate discussion.
We can offer any ordinance we want.
It was, it was, it was what the staff, the city manager, the city clerk, and I took from the discussion that you had given to us at the last workshop to try to create a starting point.
It was us that made it so painful. We made it this painful.
Yes, that's our job. Exactly right. All right.
Thank you, councilmember.
I believe we have a motion and a second on option two.
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel?
No.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes four to one.
And I'm going to, I'd like to comment, I'll take the opportunity to comment. This provides a slight adjustment, a one-time adjustment, it's not overly burdensome. I suspect if you take the incremental cost of this and factor it into our budget, I would be hard pressed to find a millage rate increase somewhere at around the ninth or tenth decimal place. So I don't see this particularly onerous, but it puts to rest, at least for the moment, the discussion. Okay, we now have approved an option for section one. Section two of this proposed ordinance talks about what goes on in the future, and there are, I believe, four options. Option number one, you can automatically adjust these salaries based on the employee pay plan adjustment, or you can do it according to the CPI. And to go back to restate, Mr. Quinn's, we look at the CPI every year for employees' salaries, but we don't necessarily raise the salaries based on that. During the heart of the recession, we had no raises. During good times, you might do more than the CPI. So option one says, based on whatever you do for city employees. Option two says, based on the CPI. Option three says, based on the state increase for county commissioners. And again, let me restate, the county commissioner's salary is determined based on the population of the county. It's done by the state, the county commission does not vote on it, but it is automatic. If the population goes up, your salaries go up. If the population stays the same, your salaries stay the same. If the population goes down, your salaries stay the same. Kind of a nice deal. Of course, I don't see the population of Flagler County going down. And then the fourth option in section two is to have no automatic raise at all, taking into consideration, Mr. DiLorenzo's, you could put in option two, that these salaries be reviewed every two years. So...
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment on the last option by Councilmember DiLorenzo. Remember now that the charter says the compensation shall be established by ordinance, so that's what we're doing tonight. Now, Councilmember DiLorenzo, you indicated that every two years, we'd go back and take a look at it again. So if you, for purposes of that implementation of that adjustment every two years, you'd almost have to redraft section number two, so that it would be done tonight by ordinance to be reviewed and accomplished, I think, by resolution every two years. Because otherwise, if, I'm just working with the language that we got in 1999, otherwise, if you adjust the salaries for two years hence, by ordinance, then those wouldn't kick in until those that took office two years later. I think there's an argument for that. You see, you see what I'm trying to say, Mayor?
Yes.
You know, if I could finish, and the reason I'm concerned about this is because historically, as you mentioned, Mayor, we've changed, we've changed, this city has changed salaries two times, 2003, 2007, and both of those were just static changes. Changed in 2003, boom, it was done. Four years later, he changed it. There wasn't anything, an annual adjustment ever before. So I'm, we're kind of a little in uncharted territory here, and I want to make sure we're on firm ground.
What Mr. Reichman is saying is that if we were to pass a portion of this ordinance saying that the salaries will be automatically reviewed every two years, two years hence, there would be a review, and let's assume, for argument's sake, council said we're going to raise the salaries, that would not take effect for another two years. Essentially.
If you do it by ordinance, absolutely, I mean, it's...
That's the only way you're going to do it, in my mind. Let me point out that the two-year is superfluous. City council at any time in any year can choose to review and adjust their salaries.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Mayor. If we put in this ordinance that every two years it shall be adjusted, I don't think that precludes another council to come in and reconsider whatever you do or do not do tonight in two weeks hence. Because that's what's contemplated by the charter.
So, Mr. DiLorenzo.
Okay, my thinking behind this is that you see how difficult this is. All right, so make it an automatic discussion, but if you made it, if you set it for a specific time of the year, somewhere between eight months before an election and six months before an election, you're just waiting until the election. It's not another two years, don't I have that correct? Right, like, right now, I don't know how far out from the election we are. We're approximately nine months.
Yes, no, you're actually correct. I mean, if this is true from now...
So if it was two years from now, it would be nine months from the election.
Yes, that is correct. It would really depend upon how you would draft this new section.
Say that in December or January of each even-numbered year, council shall reconsider. That would give you enough time...
Yes, yes, to comply with the mandates and the timing requirements in the current language in the charter.
But you're right, it is, it's really not necessary, because you could bring it up at any time.
Absolutely, and I think that was Mr. Nobiel's point, that council can bring this up at any time they think it's appropriate, and when you've got three votes, you've got it.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
What I, but see, and that's where, what I would like to see is the charter amended to, that we need to put salary raises in a referendum. This way, every two years, like you're talking about, the council can evaluate to see whether or not they want to put on a referendum an increase. You know, and I honestly don't see that every two years, but just for safekeeping, but it does, so that could, would be the amendment changes, that this needs to be, you know, this needs to be ratified by the people, and every two years that we will look at it in a workshop to see if any adjustments need to be made. If not, it just goes away. If yes, then again, then it goes to, instead of an ordinance change, it then goes to a referendum. Because I'm starting to get worried that now we could look at it every four years or every two years and say, okay, let's creep it up a little more, creep it up a little more, let's get it to the people. Let's say, look, we see we need more, vote on it, it goes on a referendum, you don't like it, it doesn't pass, we're done. You know what I mean? But every two years, we look at it, like you were saying.
DiLorenzo.
My concern with that is, okay, if you're going to bring it up at a workshop, let's say, okay, and say, should we put it on the referendum? Not automatically as a referendum?
Correct.
Now, you're still doing the same thing, you're still making the decision if it should go on...
It should go to the referendum or not, but we're not making the decision on whether it should, we're not, we're not calling the ordinance that says, okay, today we just did an ordinance for a raise, that's going to take effect in January.
But I think at that point, someone would have to stand up and say, oh, yeah, I want to do it, you know, and it puts it back to that councilperson that wants to...
What do you mean?
Bring it up. It still throws it on us.
Oh, yeah, to bring it up, yeah.
If it was done automatically every two years, we're gonna, you know, it automatically brings it up in a conversation, then it's part of, part of your workload, part of what you're doing, you look at it every two years.
Of course, as the original charter was written, that was the whole goal, it is the responsibility of the city council. Okay, we have in section two...
Mr. Mayor, sorry, one more thing. Mr. Reichman seems indisposed. The consideration, out of what we have here in front of us, a consideration to put it on a ballot, seems like it's pretty far outside of what we're, you know, what we've agended, told the public that we're going to consider.
Yes.
And so, I'm not even sure.
That's why I made the statement that we'll look at it another time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I missed that.
Yeah, no, no, that was a comment, I don't want to do that now. Yeah.
All right, so, let's see if we can bring some semblance of order to this. Section two of the proposed ordinance has, provides for several options. Option one, it's static. Option two, there's an annual adjustment based on pay plan. Option three, based on the CPI. No automatic raises, automatic raises based on CPI, automatic raises based on employee pay plan, which is quasi-CPI. Is there a motion for...
The fourth one was a county increase.
Oh, yeah, the fourth one is to tie it to the percentage of county commissioner increases. Is there a motion on one of those four options?
Your Honor, I've got a question before I make a motion of any kind. On section two, where it says, beginning on the blank of each year here and after, the salaries provided in section two shall be adjusted consistent with blank. If we vote on one of these, can we stipulate that it's done at the beginning of each fiscal year? And because two of these options deal with the CPI, whether we call it PayPal or otherwise, it's the same. So, but there, the language that's here in the proposed ordinance, if you will...
If you pass one of these four options as it's written, the adjustment to council and mayor's salary would take place at the same time that the adjustment is made to the employee's salary.
But it doesn't say, that's all I'm saying.
Well, yes, that would be the assumption, that would be the assumption.
If that option...
If you link it to the employee's salary, when the employee's salary is adjusted, at that time, the salaries of mayor and council are adjusted automatically by that percentage.
Meg, the language in section two says, beginning on the blank of each year, maybe this is a question from Mr. Quinn, is there, is there a specific date that the city does adjust?
To the approval of the budget.
The actual pay plan adjustments are done after we have eclipsed two full pay weeks in January. So not January 1st, but two full pay weeks, so it kind of varies a little bit each year. It's somewhere between the 12th and the 18th, roughly, when employees would see that adjustment, but it would take effect whenever the first day in January is of a new full pay period. So sometime after January 1st, and it varies every year depending on the calendar.
It's based on two weeks, two-week pay periods.
So, if you adjust based on employee's salary, it would take place in January after two full pay periods. If you go...
The first full pay period in January.
Okay. If you go on the June 30th CPI, it would take place in the pay period following June 30th. If you take the option that links it to the CPI rather than the employee's...
Well, the June 30th CPI itself generally is not available for about 30 days, so...
But, all right, so it'd be, all right, August, July, August.
Or, it could be any date after it's available.
Whenever the...
Any date after.
So, option, the first option, linked to employee's salary, would take place sometime in January. If you take the CPI option, it would take place sometime in July or August, perhaps?
For the ease of budgeting, Mr. Mayor, it might be better, with many of our June 30th indexes, to say effective October 1st.
That's fine, we could do that. Similar, when does the county commissioner raise, when is that published?
I am not certain as to when that takes effect and when that becomes public.
And then the other option is, leave it alone. Is there a motion for one of those options, employee pay plan, CPI, county commissioners, or nothing automatic?
I move for the option one, leave it...
Option one being the employee pay plan?
No, okay, which one is the leave it, is that four?
Four.
Okay. I only have three listed.
I know. I threw in the fourth one in because of...
Okay, it wasn't there.
It wasn't there.
Yeah.
So your motion is to have no automatic adjustments within this ordinance?
Correct.
I second that. I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Let's open for the public, anyone from the public wish to comment on this option.
Why, you know, if three of you are going to be gone, why don't you leave this, what you're doing tonight, to the new councils? Let them hash it out, and let them decide what they want and what they don't want, not the three of you that are leaving. You know, this way, they'll have a whole new council, they can do what they want, and you can retire. Now, as far as, let me see, you're not employees, so why are you even considering when they do it, when they don't do it? Pick your own time, pick your own day. But let's leave it for the next council. Besides, do you know what you're talking about?
Thank you, next speaker.
It's Bush's fault. Alan Peterson, again, it's my understanding that if you...
Alan Peterson, again, it's my understanding that if you wait till the next, till after the election, that you can't make any change until 2018, going into effect in 2019, seems to me. You're not talking a significant, regardless of what you vote, whether you vote for nothing or you vote for some type of cost of living, you're not talking a lot of money. It seems to me you ought to settle it, this, with this, with your council. The new council will have a chance to make some changes two years from now.
Thank you, next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion, bring back to council. We have a motion and a second for what I'm calling option four, which is for no automatic adjustments to be included in this ordinance. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Shipley. Yes. Councilmember DeLorenzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Yes.
Mayor Nitz.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Now, we have the appropriate fill-in-the-blanks. Mr. Reifman, is it your suggestion that we now vote on the ordinance as it has been drafted?
And let's just finish this by being very clear that what has been voted on is that the mayor would be 11, 628. That's Section 1B, and section, the member of the city council is 9,792, that's Section 2, or 1, Section 1C, and then, Section 2, annual adjustment, will
Be stricken.
will just be stricken.
Okay. So, this is kind of the long way around the horn, but.
Did we read the ordinance?
Yes, I read the title.
Please read the ordinance.
Would you like me to read the title again?
Yep, since we're going to vote on the ordinance, we'll.
Okay.
Know what we're voting on.
I'm actually going to strike through one sentence in the, in the title, and then read it, and I think this is a good idea, because really, the title needs to be changed. In accordance with the City Council, the City of Palm Coast, in accordance with the City of Palm Coast Charter, I am deleting the words for an adjustment to the salaries of, no, I'm going to leave that in, I thought, leave that in. I'm going to read here, as was, in accordance with the City of Palm Coast Charter, for an adjustment to the salaries of the mayor and members of the city council, providing for legislative findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
Because in that, in that title, there was no reference to.
Correct, there was not. I was, I missed.
Need to change it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Landon, I think, no. Since we are voting now on an ordinance rather than on options, I will ask if there is a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Anyone for the public wish to be heard on the ordinance, which will enact what we have laboriously discussed and decided upon? No one approach the public?
Let me ask you a question, Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. If you vote on this, and it becomes an ordinance, could the next council just say, we don't want it, and we're going to change it?
Yes.
Absolutely.
We're not going to throw this?
No, they'll, anytime.
Or maybe more.
This is first reading.
And as, as Mr. Reifman points out, this is an ordinance, therefore, there will be two readings. This ordinance, if it's approved tonight, will be on our next business meeting for final approval.
Oh, goodie.
We have a motion and a second. We've had public comment. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shipley. Yes. Councilmember DeLorenzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel.
No.
Mayor Nitz.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes four to one.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, a resolution approving the final plat, Hidden Lakes, Phase One, Section 2A replat. Mr. Landon.
Hopefully, we're.
Forget to.
I'm sure hoping this one's going to be a whole lot each year, because this is actually a plat of Hidden Lakes that is one of our new neighborhoods. It is a very popular area, and they are anxious to have additional lots be available for construction because of all the homes coming in. So, we're trying to move that forward, and with the next phase, and Angie or Angela, depending on what you prefer, she's going to give you the details.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Landon. Mayor Nitz, members of the city council. For the record, Angela Pilzweber, senior planner for the community development department. Tonight, I'm presenting to you application number 2959, which is to Hidden Lakes, Phase One, Section 2A, final plat. As you can see from the aerial location map, the subject property is about a 26 and a half acre site. It is located east of Old Kings Road and north of the Lehigh Canal and Town Center Boulevard. This is, this property, rather, is zone master plan development, and the Phase One master plan is for, for all of Hidden Lakes, Phase One, is 380 total lots. The master subdivision for Phase One Hidden Lakes includes three different sections. Section one of the master plan was for 131 single-family lots, which has been platted, and then Section three was for 101 single-family lots, which has also been platted. The subject of this application has to do with Section two, which is shown in the upper left corner of the, of your display, and that section is proposed to basically be divided between two sections labeled, or that will become labeled 2A and 2B. And those two sections are shown better on this map, which shows you the Section 2A, which is the subject of the application in blue, and that is proposed to be turned into a 89-lot subdivision. And then, in the future, Section 2B will be platted, and that will consist of a maximum of 59 lots. The features of this particular plat are that the plat will feature 89 single-family residential lots. The roadways will be publicly dedicated, the community is not gated, and the lots will meet or exceed the minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, and they will meet or exceed the minimum lot width dimension of 60 feet. With that being said, staff finds that the plat complies with the requirements of the master plan development, development agreement for Hidden Lakes, the land development code, and the comprehensive plan, and therefore, staff's recommendation is that city council adopt Resolution 2016 XX, approving the final plat for Hidden Lakes, Phase One, Section 2A subdivision, and authorize the mayor to execute the replat, subject to city acceptance and approval of performance and maintenance surety in accordance with the land development code. With that being said, this concludes the staff's presentation, and I believe the applicant is here if there are further questions.
Counsel questions. Could you go back to the slide that shows 2A and 2B?
Yes, sir.
Whatever it may be. You're taking one chunk of land and dividing into two separate chunks. What is the requirement for ingress and egress roads? How many lots triggers the need to have two ways in and out?
Once you exceed 50 lots, you have to have two ways in and out.
Show me the two ways in and out.
Well, this is internal to the subdivision, so you have the entrance, you have the external entrances for Hidden Lakes itself.
This is where we wish we could annotate, but Mayor, I'm actually familiar with this. If you look at the bottom, lower left corner where the blue is, you'll see that the street in the blue is tied to the existing white street. If you carry that all around, it ties into another street. So, there is definitely two ways in and out for all of these lots. And then, there are two connections to Old Kings Road, so it definitely meets the two in and out for this phase and for the entire development.
Any other counsel questions? Seeing no, open the means for the public, anyone for the public wish to be heard on agenda item number seven. Approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number eight, appoint a citizen volunteer to serve on the River to Sea Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Mr. DeLorenzo, why don't you explain what that means, since you're our River to Sea guy?
Sure. As part of the TPO process, there are citizen advisory boards. One, this particular one is for the Bike and Ped Advisory Board. They make recommendations to the board on bike and ped projects.
Okay. Do we have a ballot? We do, all right. There are three applicants, and there are five of us. If you recall, the last time this was brought before us, there was an ongoing two-to-two. Is there a pen in the room? I'll lend you mine for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You got it?
He's certified by the election board.
No, and he's not going to be.
Will we do better this time?
You almost have to.
We have three votes for Danielle Anderson, one vote for Alan Campbell, and one vote for Brian Walters.
Is there a motion to approve Danielle Anderson?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda, items nine and 10. One is for a work order to complete the beachside sewer service, and item 10 is for approval of purchasing materials for water treatment plant number two. If anyone from the audience would like to speak on either of these, before we act on them as a consent agenda, this is your opportunity to do so.
I'd like to do about 10.
Moving number 10.
I don't want to speak on it, I just want to hear about it.
In order to hear about it, we need to remove it. Anybody wish to remove anything else? Any council member wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Agenda item number nine, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number 10, Mr. Landon, want to tell us about a purchase order for twin oxide, chlorine dioxide?
It sounds like an expert needs to talk about this, so Jim Hogan, our superintendent.
President expert.
Yeah, manager of our water system, I'm going to let him talk about it a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, Mr. Landon. Jim Hogan, for the record, Water Operations Manager for the utility. Twin oxide is a disinfectant chemical that we're using as part of the, excuse me, the ZLD pilot process. The ZLD is the zero liquid discharge at water treatment plant number two, and twin oxide is a disinfection chemical like chlorine, but different. It doesn't form harmful byproducts, and we're just asking permission to purchase $50,000 of this. We've used approximately $25,000 so far. We're still in the process of determining whether or not it will be used long-term. We're still in the process of piloting that chemical.
Counsel questions, since we removed it from the consent agenda? Any counsel questions? Then we'll open the meeting to the public, anyone for the public wish to be heard on agenda item number 10.
I found that mistaken, this was brought up at the workshop, and Mr. McGuire brought up the fact that this is coming from a foreign nation. I found that mistaken. Okay. Can we, more or less, you know, what Mr. McGuire said at the workshop, you know, it kind of hit me kind of heavy, and I went home with a heavy heart. If, like he says, if there's a possibility that this stuff coming from Europe could be contaminated, I'd like to know just exactly what we are doing to prevent something like that. You know, when you talk about water, you could destroy a whole country just by contaminating the water. I remember, I don't know if you remember, but back, going back, oh, many, 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 many years ago, I think I was just about making 40, there was a rumor going around that they were going to contaminate New York City's water. That was quoting them, if I'm mistaken. And the results would have been that the entire New York City population would have been dead within a week. So, that's what I'm trying to add. What guarantee or what assertion can we rely on that this can't happen here?
Thank you, next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. But first, Mr. Hogan, what precautions are there to prevent this from contaminating our water supply?
Well, we discussed at the workshop that this company is an international company located in the Netherlands. It's, it is not an ISO 9,000 or 9,001, but it does have the European equivalent to that certification. It's also NSF standard 60 and ANSI, the American Standard, American National Standard Institute approval, which is required by the USCPA for all treatment chemicals used in potable water. It's a very stringent standard. The chemical is manufactured in a secure manufacturing facility in the Netherlands. It's picked up by a well-known air freight service, DHL, and they have strict standards, safety standards. It has to clear customs when it arrives in this country, generally, either in Miami or in Orlando. If there's any evidence of tampering whatsoever, the shipment is quarantined. The material comes in pallet form, it's palletized in five-gallon buckets, and each container has a tamper-proof pull tab on it that is, it's obvious if, first of all, if the pallet has been tampered with, because it's got that shrink wrap around it, if that were cut or damaged, you could visibly see that, and then, same with the tamper-resistant tabs on the individual containers. The stuff, after it clears customs, is then delivered to the door of the facility here in Florida, which is located in Cocoa Beach. They then deliver it to us. And we inspect each and every container, make sure that pull tab is intact, it has to be mixed, part A, part B, it's a powder with water in a tank, in a specific ratio with water, and part A and part B, and it would be very evident if either or any of those containers have been tampered with.
Thank you.
It's my understanding, chemical import and exporting is heavily based on weights, because the shipments coming in and going out need to be rectified on both sides, that the weights match. And the reason for that is because the composition of various chemicals, the density, is very different, and it would be very difficult to find the same chemical in the same compound to fit inside the same container that would weigh the same. So, it would be very difficult to, you know, now, somebody sticking a syringe in a bottle and squeezing it, that, you know, you can't really, but that isn't going to, based on the millions of gallons of water it's going to encounter, is not going to have any effect unless somebody comes up with something really, really potent. So, I don't believe this to be too much of a worry, my opinion. Hope I'm not wrong.
Okay, we've had public comment, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number 10?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Courtney McDonald, Palm Coast. Tonight, I'm here to.
Tonight I'm here to speak to you about respect and respecting your neighbors. I have lived here since October, and each month I have come to this meeting and watched one of my neighbors, Jack, get disrespected by the Bay Area Council. Every month he asks a question, and as a citizen, he has the right to ask questions. But each month, whoever the councilwoman, the councilwoman that answers the question says, "We'll get back to you." Well, do you get back to him? Yet other members of Palm Coast can come up here and ask a question, and they get an answer, played over. And a few months ago, a member from not Palm Coast came up here and asked questions, and he got an answer that night. In my view, you're disrespecting your neighbors, and you all, to my knowledge, probably live in Palm Coast. And in my view, if you can't respect your neighbors, none of you deserve to be in those chairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Larry Coletti. I live at 64 Eagle Trail, Palm Coast. I'd like to talk about, you know, the recent problems we've had with bicycles and pedestrians, people, children, adults getting hit, killed. I have some suggestions about what we can do to help. I ride my bicycle about 250 miles a week and walk about 25 miles a week. So I'm on the roads, the trails quite a bit. And what do I see? I see, what I think we need to do is adjust the traffic control lights, okay? So as you know, there is a Florida statute that says that people propelling a human-powered vehicle across a crosswalk has the same rights and duties as a pedestrian. So when I push the button to cross, let's say, Beltair at Royal Palms, all right, I push the button, when I get the signal to go, those cars are still turning left in front of me, and they are coming very close to hitting myself, my wife. People don't know the law. What I'd like to see is those lights, when somebody does press the button, to have all of the lights stay red while that walking part or biking part is in effect, okay? And in the future, I'd like to see some no-turn-on rights, because you have children coming out of some of those schools on their bikes, walking, not really paying too much attention. And the problem is, the motor vehicles are looking at the signal light, they're not looking at the pedestrian or whatever crosswalk. In addition, I'd like to see some signs where it says yield to pedestrian, also yield to cyclists, because that is the law, okay? And I think that may just help alleviate some of these accidents we have, if we can make many of the motorists and the bicycles and pedestrians aware of, you know, how to play nice together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
This is my night, right? I have to ask you a question. Is the dog pond or park, is that open? Because I see a tremendous amount of people, and when I say tremendous, I mean a lot, of these people walking their dogs where the dogs, they make everybody's yard their excretion area. Now, I understand we're spending quite a bit of money for the dog park. So why are we, why, do I have to walk down the street and worry if I'm gonna step on something that's not detrimental to my, that is detrimental to my help? That's all I wanna know, is if it's open and why these people ain't using it.
Thank you. We'll get an answer for you. Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. The one thing I've always liked about this town is when you have a question, you can come right to City Hall, and they'll either answer you right away or get back to you within 24 hours. And I'd like to personally thank Mr. Quinn, because I was in a meeting last night with him for the City Academy, and I've learned more in three hours of that meeting last night than I've learned since I've lived here. So I asked Mr. Quinn a question, and he said, "I'll have an answer for you tomorrow." Well, he did. My question was, how much money does the city spend on code enforcement? And Mr. Quinn came up with a number of, there were 17,632 summonses issued or violations to the tune of $2.5 million. That's what it cost the city to execute those violations/funds. So I said to him, "Well, how much money did we recoup against that $2.5 million?" And he said, "500,000." So that means the city of Palm Coast, Palm Coast, is losing $1.5 million a year. That's a lot of money to lose. We're in the business of making money, not losing money. So I would like to volunteer to talk to a councilperson, whoever is willing to, and maybe it's time to relook at some of the ordinances and the bylaws in this city to find out how we can avoid losing $1.5 million in one year. That's a lot of money. Now, most people who live in this town don't realize that either they have a code enforcement officer or that it's costing the city residents $2 million to run one section of the city, and we're only taking in 500,000. So we're losing a million and a half dollars a year. To me, that's a lot of money, a lot of money. So I'd like to, like I said, I'd like to volunteer to sit on a committee with the councilperson and maybe get some other residents who think that some of the ordinances are antiquated or need to be tweaked. And I think maybe then, people would have a better idea of, as to what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I've got a handout for each of you. Steve Carr, Palm Coast. 8,000 cars per day, 560 trucks per day, 60 feet from bedrooms of homes. That is ridiculous. It is very harmful. City growth can be good, except in the case where residents and their families' protection from harm is abandoned. And that's the way we feel. The policy to prevent adverse effects to an existing residential area, that has been abandoned. The ordinance that speaks against air pollution, which may unreasonable interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property within the city, has been abandoned. There is not a homeowner that is living on Florida Park Drive that has enjoyment of life or property. The traffic fumes is harming their health, and the traffic fumes and noise makes it impossible to enjoy the outside. Property enjoyment is impossible. To me, by doing nothing to correct the situation is a bullying tactic, to force homeowners to move away from the traffic or suffer the harm. If you cannot afford to move, then accept the harm the city is forcing on you, as their trucks use your residential neighborhood as a cut through. It is very obvious that city leaders put policies and ordinances in places to make residents feel like it is going to protect them and their families. But when the protection policies and ordinance that are violated, it is for the sole purpose to remove the protection. City leaders can act as, they have more knowledge about close proximity roadway harm from traffic fumes and noise than the World Health Organization, Environmental Protection Agency, Senator for Disease Control, and numerous universities around the world have talked about this. It's in addition to the regional air quality. So when you add them together, you get more harm. It is not about traffic, it's about the people that live there. It's about their health, and it's about their lives. It will not harm the health of any driver for the city to fix this problem. But not to fix it will continue to harm the health of all the residents on Florida Park The solution still is, as the intersection of Palm Coast Parkway and Palm Harbor Parkway intersection, all traffic that needs to be interchanged between those two parkways need to take place at that intersection. So please do something about it to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Glenn O'Leary, Palm Coast. I'm just gonna hand these out here. I don't wanna call it exhibit A or exhibit B, but...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. We need one for the city clerk, please.
Okay, sure. That happens to be the intersection of Palm Coast Parkway going westbound and Beltair. It is notorious for people to make a right-hand turn to go back up on that westbound lane. I've seen this happen 12 times in about three months. It's dangerous. What we should do is, we should use the fluorescent light that you see on the right, that is at at least two or three intersections to the east of the bridge, telling people not to go back up Palm Coast Parkway east. And we should use that fluorescent light and keep it on 24/7. It doesn't make any difference if people, daylight, nighttime, no matter what, for whatever reason, I'm on my cell phone, I'm new to the area, but I'm waiting for that accident to happen. And almost 12 times, I've seen that accident possibly happen. Number two, on 100 out here at night, especially when it's raining, it's treacherous. I like to go to the movies, and I'm sorry, people, I gotta tell you this, but The Big Short, 10 for 10. You wanna see a good movie, go look at The Big Short. But when I'm out here and it's raining, I can't see a thing. It's pitch dark. Now, am I gonna ask the county to put lights on? No. But what I'm gonna ask them to do is repaint the lines and put down road studs. Period. That's a simple cost that can be a safety feature. Both of these are. And the last point I'm gonna try to make, 'cause I think I got probably 30 seconds to do it, trying to find this place. We built this place, you know what? I know what a new car smells like, Mr. Mayor, but I also know what a new building smells like, and it smells good, 'cause we finally have a town hall that we all can feel proud of. And let's give ourselves a hand, because it looks fantastic. However, there's no directions for this place. When I came in to try to find this place, we've got all these beautiful signboards, but guess what? City Hall is not underneath that. So if someone could please put a direction so that, someone told me just before coming, "I got vague directions, Joe, take a left here, take a right there, if you go past Epic Theater." Let's get some directions on there. So there are three things, very cheap and inexpensive, and I believe it's gonna cut down on possible accidents happening at that intersection. It's gonna make people wanna come out at night, whether it rains or not, because we put the lines down and the road studs down. And hey, I can come into any entrance here and find this place. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, Bob Jurgel. This is the sixth year that I've come to the council to request a repaving of Old Kings Road South from Palm Coast Parkway down to 100. And last year, Mayor Nitz assured me that after the utility work, infrastructure work is completed on Old Kings Road South, the road will be repaved. And now I go down, and I see that the infrastructure work is almost complete. So I ask, is there a timetable for the repaving of Old Kings Road before my teeth start falling out, you know, from the road? Secondly, is, I'd like to ask if there's any more progress on a senior center/civic center for Palm Coast. I noticed in the paper that just today, that Deltona is just gonna spend $9 million on a senior center or a community center building in Deltona. And that leaves Palm Coast the only city of its size within the three counties that doesn't have a senior center. Addition to that is, on Palm Harbor Parkway, adjacent to the Yacht Club, which you have been considering as part of this deal, the Portuguese-American Club is vacating in Billy Ru Building North. And the Portuguese-American Club is a very nice place. It's got a kitchen, it's got a dining area, it's got dining rooms, it's got little dance plates and stuff like that. They are being leaving this year, and I was wondering if you might, since it's adjacent to the Yacht Club, you might consider that all in your package. So I just would like to ask, do you have anything on your agenda that would specify a date when you would be considering a senior center for Palm Coast? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, George Mail, Palm Coast. Two points. I was wondering, having been to workshops, you do not allow public participation, and yet the county and their workshops do. I think that if you allowed it, it wouldn't take that much more time for the workshops. And if a citizen were to give you a point of view or a tangent on a specific subject you're working on, it would give you an additional week to either research it, look it up, or think it over before the city council meeting. So I would ask that you open public participation during workshops. Second thing is fracking. I have mentioned this before. You said you would take it into consideration in the workshop. This past Monday, yesterday's meeting for the county commissioners, they are now almost worried about it, because the governor and Tallahassee, everybody up there, is pushing hard for fracking. And they have sent a preemptive law that you cannot stop it. But when it comes to your county, your city, your community, you can regulate it. So I think rather than all of a sudden we see frackings here, look what it's done, that we kind of get ahead of the subject and know what we might have to do to impose regulations before they come and do it. Fracking is the only industry in the country that uses chemicals that are proprietary. They do not have to tell anybody, the federal government, state government, local government, what chemicals they are using to insert into the ground to frac the rock. And as a recent meeting, I don't know if it was, they were telling us about the new wells we are drilling for Palm Coast. Should fracking come in here and contaminate those wells, then we have a much larger problem on hand. So I'm hoping you will consider bringing fracking up in workshop and consider working on it soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. See no approach to podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Come back to council, but first, let's see if we can answer some of the questions. There were several comments relative to traffic signals, road safety, so on and so forth, right turn on red issues, signage at Palm Coast Parkway and Beltair, directional signage to City Hall. I noticed coming down Old Kings Road, there's one sign for City Hall telling you to make a right turn, but that's the end of the sign, so...
Let me maybe give you an update. First of all, with the help of our transportation planning organization grant, we have recently, final stages, have final draft of a report for Beltair and the intersection improvements, including signage and things like the suggestion of yield to pedestrians and those type of things. So you're gonna see something soon with improvements all along Beltair and the intersections, and that'd be a good time to discuss the gentleman's suggestion and try to make it consistent. consistent throughout, one of the goals. One of the primary focuses of that is the pedestrian and bicycle safety when they're in the crosswalks. One of the key factors is, with that, just to keep in mind, is it's a right turn on red, because driver is looking left, no traffic turning right. And if there's a pedestrian, that is where a lot of those happen. The left turn, they're actually looking right at the pedestrian and the walker, and it's not as dangerous. So, an all red actually can create that right turn on red. You could say no right turn on red throughout the community, but not very practical. So, just give you some ideas that we are looking at it. Let me go down through the others. The striping in the Town Center area is worn, and it's, we have an annual budget to redo that. And I know Town Center is one of those that's on the list for, I believe, this year, not next year, but it should be on this year. I would support that 100 percent. Signage to City Hall, we have the directional signs in the Town Center area. Those are actually provided by the Town Center Community Development District. Met with them last week or the week before, and they are going to place the directional signs at City Hall like they have to other facilities in this area. So, that's actually in the works, too. So, all three of those were in the works. Old Kings Road was also mentioned, and yes, city council instructed us to move forward with that as soon as the utility work is finished. The utility lift station is not finished, and there's still some heavy traffic associated with that coming in and off the road. But we've already had discussions about going out to bid and being ready for the resurfacing program with Old Kings Road between Town Center Boulevard and wherever the resurfacing ended, up by Palm Coast Parkway. So, that is happening, and it will happen soon.
My motorcycle, thanks you.
Yes. I think that's, did I address all the traffic issues?
The only other issue, as I recall, on traffic was the traffic lines on State Road 100, and that is a state issue, state Florida DOT.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know either if he was talking about Town Center Boulevard or, he said 100. But I think he meant.
This area I know, which is a city responsibility, needs to be, is on our list and needs to be done. I haven't seen State Road 100 being a problem, but that would be a state issue. But I think the gentleman was referring, I think was referring to this area, just as around State Road 100.
Okay. No, the Dog Park is not open.
And we talked about giving city council an update on that, too. We will soon provide you an update. They're making good progress at Hollen Park. There is a dog park available. It's a county park at Wadsworth Park, which is, best access to that is on Roberts Road, just across the street from the Publix there at Roberts Road and State Road 100.
Do we have a pickup ordinance?
Yes, we do.
Yes, absolutely.
We also have a no littering order ordinance, and both seem to be ignored equally by some members of the public. The cost of code enforcement, I'll comment on that. Many things that we do don't make money or break even. Our police department, our sheriff's department, with whom we contract, that doesn't break even. Code enforcement has been an issue of City of Palm Coast. It has been a focus for city council for as long as I can remember. It's code enforcement that maintains the appearance of the neighborhoods. The only time you collect money in a code enforcement issue is if there is a repeated series of failure to comply. Code enforcement process provides notice, second notice, an opportunity to correct, a given amount of time to correct. Finally, if you do not comply, then you will come before the code enforcement board, you're still given an opportunity to comply. And then ultimately, if you don't comply, there is a messy hearing, and then there is a fine. That's where revenue would be generated. But all those early steps, there is no revenue generation, nor should there be. You don't want to start fining people without due process. The issue of whether or not you wish to relax code enforcement and stop enforcing our ordinances or amend our ordinances to make them more lenient, that's an issue that city council can talk about at any time. Comment at the workshop. It has been a position of city council that a workshop is not an opportunity for city council to make any decisions. It's discussion only among city council. Whether or not public comment would be of value, keep in mind that every council member's email address is on the city website. If you have an issue that you want city council to consider, you can contact each and every one of us at any time for that purpose.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one comment also. Purposes of compliance with state law, there is no final action that is taken at workshop. And there is an announcement made at every workshop that before final action is taken, the public will have a right to participate in that discussion in meetings like tonight. And that does comply with the Florida statute. You may remember a year or so ago, there was an addition made to Chapter 286 that allowed and required public comment on any agenda item before there's final action. But that does not prevent a local government like the City of Palm Coast from conducting its workshops legally in the manner that it currently does.
And that's something that city council could change at any time.
But the point is taken well, that. It is a good time to hear, not so much opposition, but ideas. But I guess for now, email would be, you know, I mean, I'm in favor of hearing what people have to say, so I have the next week or that week to muddle, you know. I pretty much made my mind up most of the time, you know, before I get here.
If I could interject a major difference, something that you all do that's actually quite unusual, and that is, all the items other than the land use items that require quasi judicial, you do in a workshop. So, everybody gets an opportunity to hear what the discussion is, hears the presentation a week before any action's taken. That is highly unusual. That gives the public the opportunity to provide you feedback during that whole week. And that's one of the benefits of that from the public standpoint. Typically, what local government does is, you know, have an issue, discuss it that night, take action on it that night, you read about it in the paper the next day, but it's too late to have input. Now, you can read about it in the paper, and it's, you know, almost a week. So, that is one of the real benefits of our system, I believe, to get public input.
I wouldn't be opposed to having a single public participation period at the end of the workshop, maybe not for every agenda item, but for, at the very end, following the same, you know, guidelines we use now. What's it going to take, a few more minutes? I mean, I think it'd be helpful.
Get up on a workshop. And if council chooses to do that, we certainly can do that.
Mr. Mayor, that's exactly correct, because ultimately it would have to be, our council rules and procedures currently provide for that, so there'd have to be an amendment of our current council rules and procedures. I believe they were adopted by resolution.
Question about senior center. There is no consideration at the moment of a senior center. We do have in our strategic plan the complete renovation of the community center and expansion of the community center, which will allow us to provide many of the amenities and services that a typical senior center provides. Lorenzo.
In our Parks and Recs master plan, we do have, I think, two senior centers, or two community centers, I should say, contemplated. And, you know, as we work through our strategic action plan, our five-year, 10-year, 20-year plan, they'll start to move forward.
And the Yacht Club sold, though. Yacht Club sold for considerably more than our appraisal. We've not yet, I've heard that the Portuguese Club is planning on relocating. We've not yet heard that it's for sale or what they're asking for it. Could we purchase it if we had the money in the budget? Could we make a senior, a standalone senior center? We certainly could. City council has five-year and 10-year capital plans, and it's a question if you want to add that to the plan now, something else comes out, but that's a decision city council can make at any time. Fracking. My understanding is that is the intent of Tallahassee to totally preempt, not only permitting permission of fracking, but regulation of fracking. I would certainly be in favor of us passing a resolution opposing fracking. I'm not particularly optimistic that that would have a lot of weight in Tallahassee, but if council wishes to do that at the workshop, bring it up.
That's coming up, isn't it? Mayor, you actually requested that be on the agenda. I got briefed on it this afternoon. It's on your next workshop agenda. And there has been amendment to the proposed bill that would require the drilling to meet city zoning code, land use codes, not be able to prohibit them. As the gentleman indicated, there could be some zoning regulations. Our research says it's highly unlikely we would have a well drilled in Palm Coast. What is more likely is it being drilled somewhere else, and then they go horizontal under Palm Coast, in which case, you know, it wouldn't be in your jurisdiction. So, but we can, we'll brief you on the total issues there. There's some other issues that have come up recently, offshore activities and those type of things that could have an impact on us. So, we'll brief you on all those next Tuesday.
So, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions about that next week, then?
Yeah, you can ask now, but.
My concern, my concern with that is similar to short-term rentals. If you had an ordinance in place, then, or you're some protections in place, you were not initially protected, but you received those protections back after some work. I think we'd be very hard pressed to actually get something done in time, because, I mean, the legislature's already in session. They're only going to be there another 60 days or so. But I'd like to know, if you're going to cover all that next week, that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll make sure that your options as to if we start trying to regulate them, maybe some options we can provide you. I'm not prepared for that tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, why don't we start with you, sir?
Relative to fracking, I think it would be good to hear from Richard Adams. If fracking took place off of the coast, how would we determine what effect offshore fracking in our neighborhood, if you will, affected our drinking water? That's going to be a scientific type thing, and Richard could maybe contribute to that.
Yep, we will add that to the discussion for next Tuesday.
Okay, if nothing, Mr. Mayor. Lorenzo.
No, sir. I have something. I was wondering if on the next workshop, we could have an update on TNR, or Rebel Cat relocation, whatever we're calling it, but something. I noticed there's a lot of commotion going on with Walmart, with Cracker Barrel. I see posts that other cat organizations are getting involved, and it just looks like a mess. And I thought, we've been working on it a long time, maybe we could get something together on that.
Give you an update. We don't have anything, I haven't heard any final agreement with Humane Society, but we would definitely can give you an upgrade next week.
The only other thing, sorry. Talking to people about the salaries and everything else, some people have suggested that if we do all the meetings at 6:30, which I know staff would hate because I'd all have to be here at 6:30, but if we could bring it up in a workshop to talk about why we do or don't do it at 6:30. Some people indicated that they would run for office if they would have full-time jobs, and then they could do this at 6:30. So, just something that somebody asked me to talk about, and I thought if we could bring it up at a meeting.
The rationale historically for the daytime meeting was that many of our senior citizens did not feel comfortable driving after dark.
And I actually brought that up, and I said, that's what I was told, but they said, well, if you only have 10 people at the night one, you have 10 people in the morning one, it's not much of a difference anyways. So, I just thought maybe we could bring it up in a workshop.
And this is a policies issue that you can bring up and see how we want to act on it. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Well, I mean, all of you are, I'm sure, get the publication every Monday about what's happening in Tallahassee, but fracking is not the only item that the legislators up in Tallahassee are trying to take out of our hands. They're also dealing with other issues, including and limited to elections. So, I'm sure all of you have seen that, and certainly we're watching it very carefully. And I know that city manager's already been working with your lobbyists to try to do what's best for the City of Palm Coast, so make sure that all of you have, there's a lot going on up there.
Bill sent me a memo on that today that I haven't forwarded to you, but I'll get it out either this evening or in the morning.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
I have nothing tonight, I know.
Adam Vice Mayor?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.